...'s comment. Does anyone want to speak to the city council? If so, if you go to the podium and give us your name and address, starting with Mr. Moran.
I'd like to defer-
Mr. Moran, you need-
Right.
Do you want to defer to Linda-
Linda Gear-
You can't-
Very good. Actually, you do, because it's tape-recorded and rebroadcast for all the citizens.
Okay, my name is Linda Gear. I reside in Wood Dale in the Royal Oaks subdivision community. My husband and I were residents of Elmhurst for 20 years and decided to downgrade. That doesn't mean to downgrade a community, but to get it moved to a smaller home. And we really didn't consider moving anywhere else but staying in Elmhurst, but then we- our realtor suggested we take a look at Royal Oaks. And we fell in love with that community. The winding streets, the public walk-throughs, the low-income properties. And we're so happy that we did move to that community. I will say that when we moved in, the streets in that area were a concern then, but we figured that that infrastructure had been taken care of, and now, almost four years later, nothing has been done, and we are very concerned now with the condition of the streets in the Royal Oaks community. I am here tonight for my concerns, but also as a representative for the Royal Oaks Homeowners Association. Some 94 homes from which I'm the president of the Royal Oaks Homeowners Association. Our director, Browns, Frank Moran, is also here tonight. We on the Royal Oaks Homeowners Association spend a lot of time in association fees to make sure our subdivision common areas are well-maintained. We want to make sure that those entering into the Wood Dale community through our Royal Oaks community receive a great impression of what a beautiful city this is and wish to live. We have six homes for sale in our Royal Oaks subdivision at least, and I'm sure the sellers want to make a good impression to their potential buyers. And that would include them looking at very well-maintained streets. A quality infrastructure shows the quality of the city in which you live. We are aware of this streets efficiency study that the board voted to accept last Thursday the 28th, and I'd love to get a copy of that also. Let me preface that before I say anything, we're very happy that the city realizes the need to resurface and restructure the streets in Wood Dale. It's very, very important. But the concern we have in Royal Oaks is the timeline that you have for the repair of our streets and restructure, which is 2014. The study shows that you've given numeric ratings to the streets, anywhere from 10 to 100, 100 being the best. And you show that the average number is 72, which is good, in our Royal Oaks subdivision. But Knollwood Drive has a rating of 53, which is a very low rating, as far as I'm concerned. And I'm sure if that study were done today after this horrendous winter, these numbers would be far lower, because the streets are very poor-conditioned now. Your study also states that no significant repairs will be done in our area until 2014. So does that mean that you're just going to do some band-aid repairs, some pothole patching, or some tire and some of these increasing, increasingly large cracks? And it also shows that the amount for restructuring, which will include, I guess, doing all curbs and sewers, et cetera, will be $3.5 million. Is that in today's dollar? Or are you saying is that in the 2014 dollars? Because if that's in today's dollars, I can assure you in 2014, this $3.5 million is going to be a heck of a lot more. So to restructure our streets now would in essence save you a lot more money. We would love to see this 2014 pushed up a lot sooner. But if you can't do that for the entire area in Royal Oaks, we would love to see something done to Knollwood Drive, which is in terrible condition. Let me give you a little feedback on what has happened in that area on Knollwood Drive in the past few years. Prior to when we moved in, some of the homeowners who have lived there for at least 30 years advised us that there was a very large sinkhole that occurred on Knollwood Drive. A very large sinkhole that was three or four feet deep and a very large, at 30 feet in length. That area is now sinking again. Water is standing. We have standing water in that area constantly. After this large snow and melt, we had standing water in that area, which I would say would be about as large as this gray area in this room, for the past three weeks. Alderman Cole said he drove through there and that water still is there, and there's nowhere for it to drain. It just sits on the street, and that aids to the deterioration of the street. It is crumbling there. There have been at least three water main breaks on Knollwood over the last few years. I know two just to the east of me, one to the west of me, and I remembered on the way over here, there was a water main break on Sherwood, just to the north of Knollwood. I am requesting from the village that we can get a report on the recent sewer repairs. So that has me more concerned, because that goes to show our sewer infrastructure is falling apart under our Royal Oaks community. If this street does have another sinkhole problem, I think the city of Wood Dale should consider the liability that they will have if there's damage to vehicles and, God forbid, pedestrian. I would hate to see to be one that someone that was walking up and down that street and fall into a sinkhole, but I guess I can use that as an excuse not to drive up and down that street. We have numerous large potholes on Knollwood Drive that have occurred since this horrendous winter. Royal Oaks Drive is a mess. It looks worse than some of the streets in the city of Chicago, so you perhaps want to take a look at that. There's another area of great fear of concern, and I don't know if that will have anything to do with the restructuring of our streets. Many of our residents have reported to me that they've seen city trucks going up and down Knollwood Drive, very often, and I have too, up to two times a day. I thought perhaps maybe one of these city workers was taking their lunch hour down at the end of our street, the far west end of Knollwood, which is a dead end, where you get the Songbird's Loop. Well, during that last horrendous storm we had in the summer, my husband stopped. That was when we lost all the power in Royal Oaks for three days. My husband stopped one of the trucks and asked the driver what they were doing, and he informed my husband he was going down to check a pump at the end of the street. And if that pump failed, the water from Songbird's Loop would come into our area and flood Knollwood Drive. That's a huge concern to us, and I never knew that existed. So that might be something that needs to be looked at with the restructuring of that street. Many of us have also noted far more water standing on our streets than ever before. And many, many of us, we homeowners, including me, have noticed a huge amount of standing water in some of our yards. And that has occurred over the last couple of years. I'm wondering if some of those lovely areas that were once forested, that now have been cut down to make room for homes, have the proper drainage and retention ponds? If not, are they coming into the Royal Oaks area? What we'd like to see from Wood Dale, we'd like you to take another look at Royal Oaks, especially Knollwood Drive, and consider pushing that 2014 timeline up. I know it's a lot of money, but these streets in, especially Knollwood, are not going to last until 2014. Restructuring would include new sewers, curbs, and reconfiguration of two cul-de-sacs. And that's another problem we have, and the city has acknowledged that problem. When our Royal Oaks subdivision was built in 1968, I'm sure those cul-de-sacs were able to handle the smaller vehicles, the smaller trucks. But now, they do not. The plows, the garbage trucks, the utility trucks are not able to make the turns in the cul-de-sacs without driving over our cul-de-sacs and leaving huge, huge indentations in those cul-de-sacs. We spend a lot of our hard-earned association fees beautifying those cul-de-sacs, but we have an estimate of $30,000 to repair those. And why should we empty out our coffers when we know that that is going to be done by the city when you put in new curbs? It would really end a lot of our complaints, and it would beautify the area. The restructuring of our streets would also prevent a possible major collapse again in that area. And it very well could happen, because we see that area where that sinkhole once occurred starting to sink down. We're asking not that you restructure our streets because of the aesthetic factor. Of course, we want to have beautiful streets, but this is a serious concern. So we're hoping that you take another look at the streets efficiency study and find some money somewhere to accelerate the restructuring in our community. We are, we have no intention of stamping our teeth and pounding our shoes on the tables in order to get our way, but I can assure you that you will see many homeowners from our community here on a regular basis, because we are no longer going to sit back and hope that that community will be restructured by 2014. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gear. Certainly, if you'll give your address to Mr. Holm prior to leaving today, he can get you a copy of the streets efficiency study and also the report on the sewer repair, Gary. All right, Mr. Moran?
I live in Royal Oaks. My parents lived in Royal Oaks, starting in 1966. And I bought a home in Royal Oaks in 1983. I live on Knollwood Drive, infamous figure. Just one point, Linda did an outstanding job, very comprehensive in this area. And I just wanted to emphasize that Knollwood Drive streets can pose a danger, a dangerous situation and a liability. That would be something to be considered strong. I understand that the cost of the work, the price of the work, was arrived at through federal standards, and which may be higher than our local blacktoppers would charge for doing a quality job. If that was true, many more streets may be done for the city of Wood Dale at the same cost. It would be something to look into regarding that sufficiency study, street study. And by way of example, I had my driveway resurfaced last year in May, and I used a very fine gentleman here in Wood Dale, Mr. Lu Di Amico, and his stuff. And they resurfaced my driveway. And I had competitive costs of between $500 and $1,100 more for the same job. There are other blacktoppers in the city of Wood Dale, probably, who might likely have a real nice contract job for the city of Wood Dale to save them a lot of money and accomplish completing more streets faster. Appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wants to address this topic? All right, not Mr. Holm. If you want to go out with Mr. Holm, you can exchange information. He'll make sure that he gets you a copy of the reports that you requested. If you guys want to use the cafeteria on the side here. Does anyone else wish to address the city council this evening?
I'd like to address that.
You would like to address it?
Right, I mean, I have concern-
Alderman Wesley?
I totally understand where you're coming from, but you have to remember that in this city, we have streets that are at 33 percent that are gravel already, okay? There's only so much money that we could put out for streets. And the sense is, is why it was, I don't know why it went that way, but I think that normally, we try to group streets together and try to get better costs for the whole project, instead of doing one street and then come back and do that down the line. But with the street study, there's streets at 33 percent in this town, and those need to be done priority, or else there won't be any roads. And it just happened to be by where the library is and where the schools, the kids walk. I totally understand, Noel, we could, I mean, I have no problem looking at that down the street here, but we need to take priority streets first. And when we spend the money to do this study, and I look at your concerns quite heavily here, but we also have to look at the whole entire city and saving costs by doing a whole area at once. And we have talked about it, and, you know, it might be a consideration if you, I mean, the council might take that direction and do that one street, since it's at 53, but when we put the, when, I believe when the committee put the street study together, they tried to look at the cost savings of grouping it all together for more money that we could get for our bucks. So I plead with you, I understand that, but I still got, the council could make the decision, move it up down the line, we could talk about, but I'm sorry, when I got streets at 33 percent and 45 percent, I'm-
Are they in your ward? The 33 percent?
Sir, sir, I'll be glad to recognize you during citizen comment, but it has to be from the microphone, but all, that's no problem.
Well, the one half, the one is in my ward, which is right by the library where the kids walk, okay? That's 33 percent. But I'm not, the reason why we went to street study, and I'll be totally honest with you, the reason why we went to street study is because no alderman could sit up here and start picking, choosing, oh, my ward's worse than that. That's why we did the street study. And we thought, as a council, that was fair enough to do a whole-blown street study. And then, we don't have that ward's worst, election time, let's get those streets done. And we're making it fair for everyone in this whole city by doing the street study. I understand your frustration 100 percent, but it could be addressed.
Well, let me go to the gentleman first. If you'd go to the podium and-
I just have a couple of questions.
And if you'd hold your comments until you're before the microphone. All right, yes, sir. Give us your name and address.
I also reside at Royal Oaks subdivision. A couple of questions. In the planning stages, and I don't know if I really should address this too, but at a 10-year street study, when was this first thought of to look at it and say, we need to put together a study to look at our streets and sidewalks and gutters here in the city of Wood Dale? How long ago has this been going on?
Actually, this is our second program. It started probably 25 years ago.
Okay, thank you, man. That's helping me, because I'm trying to get a handle here. I'm looking at this and saying, if you have a study in place and you look and you say, okay, normally, a street is going to last 15 years. So you put together your first study of 25 years, and you said, okay, these are the streets that we want to concentrate on, and we want to have a plan in place so that every year, you're letting out bids to have streets resurfaced, so it's an ongoing process, so that every two years, or every five years, or every seven years, you're going to have streets in the city or within the village that you know are going to be in place to be repaired. Royal Oaks has not had anything done in that subdivision for 15 or 18 years. Now, all of a sudden, and I understand, you're saying to me that you've got streets in your ward or in the, within the city that are at 33 percent. Somewhere along the line, I believe that the ball has been dropped in the planning process, because you should always be able to say, every two or three years, these are the, this is the area that we're going to concentrate on. We know that this street is up and it's ready to be done, and you let the bid out, and you have the money in place to pay for it. You're looking at saying to me now that you're going to look to do this street relocation or resurfacing and repair in our subdivision in eight years. And the money in eight years is not going to be the $3.5 million that my wife and I, that Linda pointed out. The price is going to just continue to go up every year. So it seems to me that somewhere along the lines here, the ball has been dropped as far as putting together a cohesive plan for the streets, for resurfacing, for putting in curbs and gutters, for putting in sidewalks if they're needed. Now, I don't know where the buck should stop on this guy. I really don't. But I see it's really frustrating to me when I look and I see, here's a city that's got millions of dollars in revenue coming in, and tax revenue that's here, and taxpayers that are paying out for services that they're wanting to have performed for them, but yet there doesn't seem to be a cohesive plan. And if there is, gentlemen and ladies, then I apologize from the bottom of my heart for opening up my mouth, but I just don't see a plan in place here. I really don't.
No problem. I think after you talk to Mr. Holm and review the documents we're going to give you, you'll see that we did create a plan, you know, 25 years ago. We completed the first plan of reviewing every street and completing and repairing every street within the first 20 years. And this is our second stage in going through the second plan. And I think it would be best handled if Mr. Holm has the opportunity to discuss it with you. And then, if you still have concerns, feel free to come on back and call me or come to the next city council meeting. But I think we can meet, I think we can all meet your needs and concerns and come to an agreement on this. So, yes, sir. And you'll need to go back to the podium.
Do you have an 8-year plan, 2014, 2015, that Royal Oaks will probably take one to three years to do?
Again, I'll defer to Mr. Holm, who I think can give you the exact answers on that. I believe it's a 20-year plan to cover every street, and we also have a plan for doing all the sewer lines and also all the water lines. We are very dedicated to doing the infrastructure maintenance in the community. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, though.
I think it would take that long to do Royal Oaks, is what I'm trying to say. Maybe at least a couple of years, maybe three.
Mr. Holm actually has a plan where hopefully he can get it done in one construction season.
And I was wondering, in terms of the funding, in the last meeting I attended, there was some confusion over the amount of funding that wasn't received in Wood Dale for the streets. More was expected. And over these next years, where does the funding come from for this project, major project?
There's several sources of funding. The one is the utility tax, which is a dedicated source of revenue for capital projects. And also, we went to the residents about a year ago and asked them to increase the sales tax by one additional percent. And we have, by referendum, dedicated all that to capital improvement projects of roads, sewer, and water lines.
And in your opinion, the funding that you requested and that you achieved is enough to cover the entire cost of the streets, which is quite expansive?
Yes, we believe it is. I think the discussion regarding the decreased revenue is obviously where, well, there's dispute about this, whether we're in a recession or not. But sales tax revenues have not come in quite like we anticipated, but there's no reason in the next cycle, two to three years from now, that that will not increase. Particularly, if we get western access out of the airport and we get redevelopment of the Thorndale Corridor, we expect the future of the city of Wood Dale will be very strong with the economic redevelopment that that will bring.
Very nicely.
Okay. Mr. Holm? Anyone else wish to address the city council? If not, I do not have any written communiques under mayor's report, special events. And before you do that, I'm going to recognize Mr. Murmas as to your new status with the city of Wood Dale.
I'd like to introduce our new special events coordinator, Diana Rona. I thought Alderman Police was going to do the introduction, so I didn't have anything prepared.
Alderman Police, any comments you want to make? As chairman of special events?
That's all I was going to say, is that she's the new special events coordinator. She comes from Parkway Bank, correct?
I come from Wood Dale.
No, well.
Actually, I come from the South West Side of the town.
But she was a member of the Chamber of Commerce with Parkway Bank. I'm sorry.
For people who don't know me, I'm recently told to people, you know, I'm resident of Wood Dale. I was with Parkway Bank prior to the opening of the office here. I left the bank, and I was fortunate enough to get that position as a special events coordinator here. While I was involved with the chamber, I did help originate the very first case of Wood Dale that we had, which has developed into wine tasting and silent auction. I'm still active in that committee. I'm active on the committee for the scholarship, which is what we fund with, the wine tasting and silent auction. I've done after-hours at various businesses, and I'm very pleased to be here, and I'm getting a lot of help and support from everyone in the administration. But the reason I'm here is that I was asked to do up a report for what's happening with special events. Everyone should have one of those reports there at the station. In detail, that starting with April, for special events, we have our volunteer dinner. All of the invitations should be out. Everyone should have received them. We hope that it'll be a really nice time. It's changed up a little bit. Please, everyone who's on the committee, if you know of a volunteer who's volunteering time for the city, and you want to recommend them for volunteer of the year, please do a form and that everybody will recognize them as volunteer of the year. In May, under the guidance of John Peace, we'll have Memorial Day Parade. The last Tuesday in June starts the Sounds of Summer, the Sounds of Summer series. All of the bands are listed there as to who is playing and what their venue will be. And the last full weekend in August, the 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, would be planned for what previously was called the Sounds of June, but will now be referred to as Wood Dale Family All the events are coming up. We are looking to bring a little more revenue in, because we realize that the community that's running is not a bottomless pit. And we are also looking to have a few more volunteers, and I would like all of the, all the persons to realize that everyone is invited to participate, and everyone has to express their enthusiasm for the year.
I believe you're also going to be looking for sponsors.
We are going to be sending out letters for sponsors for Sounds of Summer and for the Wood Dale Family Days. That would be correct. We had quite a few sponsors last year, and we're hoping, even though we're in a recession or digression or whatever we're in, that people will still come out and support us and help support the community that they live in and do business in.
And also looking for some of our local merchants to be vendors at the-
Yes. We, last year was the first year that we had booth vendors at the summer night. It was very successful. We'll extend that this year and have the booth vendors out there for three days a week. And we are also hoping for the Sounds of Summer to see if some of those vendors would want to come out on any one of those four nights to invite people to taste whatever offerings I can bring out there. If we get more than four who are interested, we'll put all the businesses in the lottery, and we will get out there.
Any comments or questions? Thank you. Sounds great. Look forward to it. Also, under mayor's report, the thoughts and the prayers of the citizens of Wood Dale are with Zach McDonald and his family. For those of you that don't know, Zach was a 2004 graduate of Fenton High School, a local Wood Dale resident, who suffered injuries while serving his country in Afghanistan from a bombing, severe injuries, brain injuries. And he's currently recovering, I believe, in Germany. So our thoughts and prayers are with him. That concludes my report. Mr. Manager?
I have one report. I'd like to remind all residents that Earth Hour is upon us on March 29th, 2008. For those of you wondering, what is Earth Hour? Earth Hour is a World Wildlife Fund initiative to turn off the lights in cities around the world for one hour, starting at 8:00 PM local time on March 29th, 2008. Earth Hour will demonstrate that by working together, each one of us can make a positive impact on this global issue. Earth Hour encourages businesses, communities, and individuals to take the simple steps needed to cut their carbon dioxide emissions. World Wildlife Fund will hold this event in at least 14 cities across six continents in the U.S. It will be held in Chicago, Atlanta, Phoenix, and San Francisco.
If there's no comments or questions, that brings us to the consent agenda. Is there any objections to any items on the consent agenda? Alderman Wesley?
I'd like to take two and three off their- I'd like to take two and three off there.
Those will be removed. Hearing none others, may I have a motion to approve the agenda being items one, four, five, and six?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now may I have a motion to approve the items on the agenda being approval for staff to purchase two vehicles through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative at a cost not to exceed one hundred eighty-five thousand nine hundred and nine dollars. Approval of proceeding forward with Heitman Architects for the train station redevelopment or development project not to exceed one hundred and two thousand seven hundred and fifty-two dollars. And approval of temporarily increasing taxi cab license limit from ten to twenty. And approval of an ordinance amending Chapter Fifteen, Article Twenty of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Wood Dale to amend the restricted parking ordinance. Is there such a motion?
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Shockey? Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Kinnate?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Kadawa?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatton?
Yes.
Those items are approved. Items two and three will be taken up after the executive session. And item six is approved as ordinance zero, O dash zero eight dash twelve. That brings us to the committee chairman reports, planning and zoning and building. Alderman Kadala.
The first item, I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the zoning code of the city of Wood Dale to create a zoning classification for the B four Town Center Business District. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Kinnate?
Yes.
Alderman Kadawa?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatton?
Yes.
That passes ordinance O dash zero eight dash thirteen.
Okay, the next item, I would like to make a motion to approve an ordinance approving a, a map amendment rezoning property previously classified under certain business classes to B four Town Center Business District. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? Roll call.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Police?
Yes.
Alderman Kinnate?
Yes.
Alderman Kadawa?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Lewatton?
Yes.
That passes ordinance O dash zero eight dash fourteen.
That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
My thanks to staff and the council for a job well done on the B four zoning district. Hopefully that will spur part of the redevelopment of our community we were talking about earlier. Public Health, Safety, and Judiciary, Alderman Coles?
No report.
Public Works, Alderman Winger?
I make a motion to approve the Streets Sufficiency Study, ten-year plan that includes the deletion of Commercial Street West of Wood Dale Road for the 2008 program.
Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.